And we'll call tonight's Lebanon Planning Commission meeting to order. We're going to skip a flag salute since we're virtual and we're going to go straight to the roll call.
Absolutely. Chairman Salvage.
Here.
Vice Chair Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner McLean.
Here.
Commissioner Prenovo.
Here.
Commissioner Bracken.
Here.
And Commissioners Galka and Ports are excused.
All right, thank you. Reviewing the minutes, these are minutes from November 18th, 2020. Are there any concerns or revisions or additions to those minutes? I'm seeing none, so those minutes stand as submitted. Citizen comments. I'm going to check with Kelly to make sure we don't have anyone who's signed in that's going to participate that I didn't know about before this.
We haven't received any citizen comments on non-agenda items before the meeting. I'm not sure for Belma's iPad if they're here to speak on non-agenda items. You guys are muted unfortunately.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, this is Steve and Belma Kirkley, our property on 599 Russell Drive.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so they're here for the agenda item.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Then we have no, we have no citizen comments regarding non-agenda items.
No.
So we will move on to the commission review of the planning files. And before we open planning file A-20-07 and the CPMA 20-02, I will let our city attorney go over the format for tonight's virtual meeting.
There we go. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, so the virtual meeting procedures, I like to, you know, I started out usually when we have in-person meetings that they're posted on the wall. So they're posted not on the wall, but they're in the notices that have been provided. The testimony will proceed in the same fashion. We will ask for the applicant to go first. We will then allow for anybody that is in opposition to the application and then rebuttal if necessary. We will start out with staff report and the staff report will provide this commission information that staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria and the comprehensive plan and the land use regulations. It is fine to have questions of staff by the commission. After that, like I said, we'll have the public testimony. The key on the public testimony is this has not changed in any way from based on the different types of meetings we're having. But the audience may provide testimony concerning any issues relevant to the hearing, but all testimony or evidence must be directed to the criteria described in the staff report or the other criteria listed in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Please note the failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues, will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. At the beginning of the hearing, we will ask the commission to state any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. If anybody has any questions as to what those are, I'm always happy to weigh in on that. So at that, you can open the hearing and ask for ex parte contact or conflicts of interest or bias.
All right, thank you, Trey. Regarding planning file A-20-07 and the Comprehensive Map Plan Amendment 20-02, amongst the planning commissioners, has there been any ex parte contact or conflict of interest? All right, seeing none, then we will go over to Kelly for the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Let me go ahead and share my screen here really quick. Can you all see it now?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. So let's ignore that title and hope that I have the right slides up following it. Yeah, okay. So, good evening. Under consideration tonight is a proposed comprehensive plan map amendment and annexation for the property at 599 Russell Drive, which is located on the northeast corner of Franklin Street and Russell Drive. The subject property is 3.90 acres in size and the full width of Franklin Street along the length of the property, as well as the full width of Russell Drive along a portion of the property is also proposed to be annexed as part of the proposal. The property to the south and west are located within city limits and therefore the site is contiguous and eligible for annexation. The property is in a developed residential neighborhood and currently designated as low-density residential. To the north and east are residential properties within the county unincorporated areas and has a comprehensive plan designation of residential low-density. To the, to the west and the south are properties within the city's city limits with the zoning of residential mixed density. And both of the properties to the west and the south have recently been approved for apartment complex developments. For the comprehensive plan map amendment, in order to approve an amendment to the map designation, the amendment shall be consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and facilities plans, including the transportation plan. For sewer, water, and storm drainage, as you can see slightly on the map here, you already have those facilities within Russell Drive and then you have a couple of extensions that go up towards Franklin Street as well. These facilities are sized appropriately for any level of residential development, although there's nothing proposed. The facilities are available and would be able to be connected to upon annexation. And the 3.98 acre property, if the modified comprehensive plan and zoning were to be applied, would not create an impact to the capacity of the existing infrastructure. For transportation, according to the 2018 transportation plan, Russell Drive maintains a functional classification of a minor arterial and Franklin Street maintains a classification of a collector street. Minor arterials typically serve higher volumes of traffic at moderate to high speeds and collector streets serve as a critical role to the road network to connect traffic from local streets to the arterial network. As such, both of the streets are classified to accommodate any, the level of traffic associated with any type of residential development based off of their classifications and improvement in size. In addition, as any part of any future development on the site, there may be some land dedication that is required for Franklin Street to provide a dedicated center turn lane and that would be determined upon any development proposal. Finally, in terms of conversion of the land designation, there is a surplus of land based off of the 2019 Housing Needs Assessment in terms of the acres needed to provide the anticipated housing demand over the next 20 years. Those acres associated to the building land inventory, you have over 240 acres of surplus for low-density residential and 63 acres of surplus for high-density residential, but none for the medium-density residential. With the RM classification, it would provide opportunities for all types of residential housing, not just low-density, so it could provide the additional housing for a medium-density or high-density development as well. And as it can accommodate either low-density or any other type of development, the conversion of the property would not be an impact to the available land inventory. And so with that, we did, at the end of the day today, receive two public comments in opposition to the application. The comments were largely in opposition to development of the site and referred to crime within the area as a reasoning behind it and the requirement to identify the need for development associated with the annexation and comprehensive plan map designation. I would ask the planning commissioners if they have had time to review those two emails or if they need additional time prior to further deliberation, but they were provided to all of the commissioners and to the applicant representatives before 5:00 PM this afternoon. So with that, I'll conclude my report and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
I just wanted to make sure that each planning commissioner that's present tonight did have a chance to review those citizen comments that were submitted this afternoon or that we received this afternoon. If you, if you didn't have a chance to look at it, we can take a real short break and make sure everyone's had a chance to read their, their pretty brief emails. All right, since no one's asking for time, that leaves me to believe everyone has had a chance to read the citizen concerns that were submitted. Now, does anyone have any questions for staff regarding this planning commission hearing? Kelly, you briefly mentioned the, the possible widening of Franklin. I know we just approved a few months ago, an apartment complex on the other side of Franklin.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to remember, maybe Ron would be able to answer this better. I'm trying to remember the required build out they had for that, that short section that's going to run along the property.
Yeah. I will.
I can answer it for you, Jeremy. So the intersection with Russell will be, will have a protected, not protected, but a left turn lane there. So you have three lanes there. We required them to take that back, the development to the east, we required them to take it back to their first driveway. So you have stacking distance for a left-hand turn movement. The full build out of this will be two bike lanes, two travel lanes in the center turn lane and sidewalks, curb and gutter. And after you get past the, the application that was just approved, I want to say last month, it'll narrow down to two travel lanes and the center turn lane will go away. Now, that makes the assumption that something, depending on what they do for development here, there may be a need to extend that center turn lane, but at this point, we don't know that.
Okay, so to clarify, there's going to be a right-hand turn lane, a left-hand turn lane, and then a just oncoming lane that's going the opposite direction? Or there will be, there will be, there will not be a center turn lane, is that what you're saying?
No, there, well, there will be. So at that intersection, since it's a T-intersection for all intensive purposes, you'll have, if the property to the south develops, the right lane will become a right-hand turn or a through lane or a cross-traffic lane, and then you'll have a left-hand turn lane.
Okay, and then further down the road, though, there may be a center, center lane, but not, not for sure yet.
Yeah, it would only be for, it would only be for turning movements into any proposed development that you're looking at tonight, whether it warranted it or not.
Okay.
But Franklin Street itself will never see the full center turn lane. There's not enough right-of-way to do that and accommodate parking throughout the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for staff? All right, we'll move on and if the applicant is present tonight and would like to speak, we'll invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening, planning commission, staff, and members of the public. My name is Laura LaRocque and on behalf of UDL Engineering and Land Surveying, we'll be representing Mr. Kirkley, who is also present this evening. So I think Kelly did a really great job providing an overview, both in the staff report that was presented in advance of this meeting and also in this presentation that she just presented. So I won't repeat what Kelly had to say. I will touch on just a few items, but mostly will be present for any questions that might come up. Before I go too far, can everyone hear me okay? Okay, wonderful.
Yeah.
So as Kelly mentioned, their application before you is for an annexation of a piece of property and also a conversion of the prescribed zoning designation to an RM mixed-use zone. So this particular property is currently the urban growth boundary of Lebanon's city limits. The zoning designation that was prescribed for this property was likely established at the time that UBG and zoning designation across the communities were established. So the purpose of the annexation, of course, is to bring the property into the city of Lebanon so it can be developed to city standards at some future date. There's no development proposal currently. The conversion of the LM, excuse me, L, Low Density Residential Zone District to the Mixed Use Residential Zone District will, as Kelly mentioned, allow for an array of land uses for this site. So the LM, the Low Density Residential District, is really limiting. It just limits mostly to single-family residential development because of the location of this site on Arterial Road and also a collector. And the size of the property, it lends itself better to more creative design. And that could be anything from a mix of single-family residential dwellings to a higher-density use and perhaps even commercial purposes in this particular area. So the conversion from the low-density to the higher-density is really aimed at meeting the city's needs for the future for not just residential, but also commercial needs. And it also just allows for a more creative, more broad housing mix to be developed at the site. In particular, there were some questions raised about crime and also traffic at this location. Crime really isn't addressed in the development code, so I will move more to the transportation, traffic question concerns that arise. Typically on these sort of development proposals, when there's not a plan for how it will be developed, that's really when the transportation studies and a more detailed analysis takes place. So when and if somebody comes up with a development proposal for this property, that's really when city staff and the property owner really look closely at what fits the needs for the community, how the street will be designed to handle the volume that the development creates and really looking at some of those safety and traffic concerns at that time when there's more known about the site and the use and the amount of trips that the site would generate. So with that, I'll wrap up the presentation that I have, but am available to answer any questions if you have them.
Laura, I just wanted to clarify one thing. This is going for residential low-density to residential mixed-density, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, you slipped up in one, I think you said high-density, but I just wanted to clarify, this is a mixed, application for mixed-density?
That's correct, RM mixed-density, yes, pardon my mistake.
All right. That's all right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? All right, I'm seeing none. Thank you, Laura. If there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the application, now's your chance. All right, I see, see no one. So now if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this application, I state your name and your address and you have a chance to speak now. Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing no one would like to speak in opposition to the application, so we will be closing the public testimony portion and all further discussion will be limited to the planning commission and staff. So amongst the planning commission, do you guys have any concerns regarding this application? Do you feel like this application meets the planning criteria to recommend an annexation and a zone change to the city council?
Hey, Jeremy, this is Samuel. You know, it's in the urban growth boundary and
I just have a one, maybe one and a half comments, so, oh, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's in the urban growth boundary. Yeah, we're in the urban growth boundary and they're going from low to mixed to allow more creative use and there really is no development plan right now. And, you know, there's a need. I understand what the, the comments were saying about crime, but again, right now, there's no development. There's not really much we can do about crime. And there was another comment about unnecessary foot traffic and things like that. The good, good concerns, but to be annexed and simply changing the, you know, from low-density to a mixed-density, I think that's a little far ahead and I think it meets criteria to move to city council.
Thank you, Samuel.
I agree with Samuel, so.
I agree, Jeremy. It looks pretty straightforward. I don't see any issue at all with the application.
All right, yeah, I also agree with Samuel that the concerns that were submitted are legitimate. No one wants to see more crime or an increase in traffic, but there's, the crime, that can be addressed by a different area of expertise than what we're doing here tonight. And then any, any development will be subject to, you know, traffic impact analysis or at least a review by the city staff as to what's being built there. So as far as this application meeting the criteria, I believe that it does and I believe that it does warrant a recommendation to city council to annex the property into the city of Lebanon and change the use from low-density to mixed-density. And if we're all in agreement, I would welcome a motion.
Can you hear me, Jeremy?
Yes, I can.
Hi, this is Samuel. I recommend to city council the approval of the proposed comprehensive plan map amendment to designate the property as residential mixed-density and the property and street annexation and establishment of the applicable residential mixed-density zone adopting the written findings for the decision criteria contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a second from Dawn. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Okay, any opposed to the motion, say nay. All right, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the public that watched this tonight and participated. The next item on our agenda is the severe rent burden community meeting. Now, this is not a, this is not a planning file or public hearing. This is more of a work session, is my understanding, Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to turn it over to you to let us know what we're discussing tonight.
Okay, so before I start sharing my screen, this is a discussion item. We do have representatives from some local service providers, from the Community Services Consortium, as well as Dev Northwest that have so graciously donated their time to speak with us tonight about this. And so I would welcome anybody as we go through the information to pop up with any questions that you might have. And I will be sharing my screen with the presentation so that you can see the statistics and everything that we're going to be talking about, but feel free to pipe in with any questions and it's meant to be a dialogue. We did notice this meeting to the public through the newspaper, as well as posting it on the city's website. But obviously, in the era of Zoom, we haven't received anybody requesting to participate directly in that conversation. So we'll be reporting this conversation and the results of it to the state as well as part of our legal requirements. So if we don't have any questions about the, the format, I can go ahead and get started with the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So our Lebanon housing conversation, why are we here? Well, we're here because in 2018, the state legislature passed House Bill 4006. This requires cities with 10,000 population or higher that have a designation of a severe rent burden community to hold an annual public meeting to discuss the causes and consequences of severe rent burden within the community, the barriers to reducing rent within the community and any possible solutions. And so in previous years, we actually held one of these meetings in December of 2018. And then in 2019, this conversation got rolled into the Housing Needs Assessment conversation that was had probably, I think, in March and April of 2019. And now we're back on the schedule of doing it annually at the end of the year. So until we are no longer rent burdened community, we're going to be having this conversation every year. So what is severe rent burden versus not? It is defined that a housing option is affordable when the household pays up to or less than 30% of their gross annual income on housing expenses, which is included, inclusive of rent and utilities. It becomes a burdened household when it spends more than 30%, 30% of their income and then it becomes severely rent burdened when it's more than 50%. And then we're going to be talking about different types of housing affordability. It's going to be market rate affordability versus a regulated affordable housing unit. And regulated affordable housing units are those that are usually subsidized by some sort of government funding. And then they have what's called a covenant placed on the property for a period of usually about 50 years that restricts those units to be rented to only those that are income-qualified, meaning that they earn less than usually about 80% of what's the area median income. So now that we kind of know what we're talking about, for the city of Lebanon, we have approximately one in every three renter households is considered to be severely rent burdened. So that's over 1,000 households within our community. The good news is that number is actually down. We've dropped a couple of percentage points, but we are still fairly high in terms of the number of households and we are one of 11 cities with the population between 10,000 and 25,000 that falls under that severe rent category. Another statistic that's not, the best statistic is we, out of all of the cities that fall under the severe rent category, are the ninth highest in terms of percentage throughout the states. So we do have a clear issue and, and we need to work on several different prongs of how to address that issue. And this data here is just a demonstration that as you are lower income, you are far more likely to be cost-burdened or severe rent-burdened, depending on how much lower from the area median income you are. And so as we continue forward, we'll get to some specific numbers within Lebanon. And this is Lebanon's statistics, but it demonstrates that the lower income you are, the more likely you are to be rent-burdened. One of the reasons why we are burdened in the, the rent category is because fair market rents continue to increase and they're increasing at a pretty high clip of 15% over a three-year period. Fair market rents continue to increase and they're increasing at a pretty high clip of 15% over a three-year period. The numbers are a little outdated because we don't have the statistics for 2020 yet, but we, we've gotten it as best as we can. But as you can see with this slide, we identify income needed to be able to afford each of the different types. Of bedroom counts and what those market rents generally fall within. And how much you'd be spending depending on the bedroom count. The next slide. Is going to show you that we have over or almost 2,000 households that can only afford what would be the equivalent of a studio. Apartment based off of the market rents. And that is a pretty high. And then you go into more than, well over half of the community. Can only afford the equivalent of a two-bedroom apartment or less when you get into the numbers. There was a data of book, a book of data that came out that basically was a study from OSU. And it basically said that you have a minimum income requirement. To meet the basic necessities based off of age. So those under 65,000 to meet the basic necessities require. Income of 50,000 or more and for 65 plus or an income of 40,000 or more. Lebanon's area median income is around $45,000. And so that shows that more than half of the, the residents don't have the income to have the basic necessities met. Based off of their income and their housing requirements. So this is a further example. It shows the median income. Based off of Lynn County. For the, the income areas and then it also shows the average income home price. An individual household would need to earn $8,000 a year to be able to afford a $2,000 a month mortgage. And you have to earn just under 20, $20 an hour to be able to just afford a two-bedroom. And those are fairly high income brackets for a working community. So it kind of shows you what we're working with, that the market rents are much higher than the, the incomes that are being provided in our community. Any questions so far? I'm kind of going through it a little quick. No? Okay. Um, so a couple of the causes of rent burden. Renting is on the rise, especially with the more 55 and older population. It continues to increase. That has a lot to do with property values and the ability to purchase other homes. There's also a, a supply issue. The last I checked, we had on average in Lebanon, only a 2.4% vacancy for rental units. And that's astronomical. What that means is because there's no units available and there's such a low vacancy rate. People are ending up having to spend more money. On homes and housing that they can't afford or that they don't need because it's the only stuff available that, that's in the, the stock. So for example, if I'm a single person with a single income, but there's no studios or one-bedroom apartments available. My only option would be to spend more and become severe rent burden by taking a two-bedroom apartment. Or a duplex unit for a size that I don't need, but that's the only thing that's available in the housing stock. And so there's also the lack of affordable housing. That is the, the rent restricted housing that we talked about earlier. We have 271 units we need per the latest calculations, 363. We do have the bright side, good news that 72 units were approved by the planning commission this year for affordable restricted housing units. So we are making inroads on, on that aspect. But overall, housing cost is increasing in the state and in the region. You have the lack of housing that's keeping up with the population growth. So you can kind of blame those horrible Californians and those people coming from out of state. Me included, that end up coming in here and, and are able to pay cash for housing units. And so it takes the competitive edge out of those who would take a normal loan or something like that. So it's a lot harder for those to compete that, that don't have that influx of cash available. And so those are a couple of the different causes. The, the consequences of it is if there's not the housing stock or you're unable to afford it. There is an increase in homelessness associated with it. There's also an increase in what's called mobility. So you tend to move around a lot and depending on where you end up having to move. Your students end up having to have a disruption in their learning because they're moving from one school district to another. Or they are having to deal with a larger burden on the personal side of the equation. That they don't have the capacity to be able to focus on school stuff. With the, the requirements to move and to have the housing insecurity. It increases a need for further support programs for social services. It reduces the ability for people to make healthy choices. To have safe vehicles if you have to travel farther and to be able to have an affordable house. That means that you're having to travel farther to your workplace. So you have increased costs associated with that. There's also the issue of you don't have the ability to. Put any savings in, you're ending up to live paycheck to paycheck because you're spending so much money on your housing. Which means you don't have the upward mobility to save, to be able to purchase. Or, or move where you need to move. And if you can't save, that means you can't purchase a home. And so there's a reduction in the homeownership rates. And, and like I said, you remove that upward mobility option and, and growth for the, the household income insecurity. So moving on to barriers of reducing rent burden. Overall, there's this study, what was done or this survey was done of where the restrictions are coming from. And what are the biggest barriers? Lack of available vacant land is a big one. This is going to not just be in Lebanon, but in the region and the state. In Lebanon, we have available land, but we don't necessarily always have the infrastructure to get you to that available land. And so there, there's issues associated with that. There's not enough affordable housing being developed and being funded. There's constrained lands, which regardless of whether the state wants to admit it or not, wetlands equals constrained lands. Because that's a higher cost to be able to develop an affordable product. And the examples continue to go on from there. But this gives us a guidance of at least a survey test starts to tell us where we can start making inroads. To try to solve the, the problem. So who's helping? This is where I get to introduce the, the individuals that have decided to join us. We have from consumer, the community services consortium, Dina Eldridge. And from Dev Northwest, we have Brigetta Olson and one of her colleagues. Brigetta is leaving us and moving on to a new position and so she's transitioning tonight. And so I'm going to give them the opportunity to speak and stop sharing my screen and continue the conversation. So if we want to have Dina start up with us?
Thank you, Kelly. I'm Dina Eldridge. I'm the, the housing services manager for Community Services Consortium. And for those who might not know what CSC does, we are the community action agency for Lynn, Benton and Lincoln counties. So we serve a rather large region. And we do a whole wide variety of different programs, but they're all aimed at helping people who are low income or trying to. Improve their circumstances and escape poverty. So I'm in charge of the housing and homeless programs that CSC does. We have a wide variety of programs that help people leave homeless situations and get back into permanent rental housing. And we also do quite a bit of what we call homeless prevention. Which in most cases equates to helping people who've fallen behind on their rent and are facing eviction. Or helping people who, maybe they've lost their own apartment, but now they're doubled up with friends and family and kind of an unstable situation. But they're trying to move back into their own units. So I, you know, everything Kelly already went over, we echo. The main reason that we end up turning most people down that. The most common reason we deny someone who calls us for assistance with moving costs or any kind of rent. Is if they're not housed, it's because they have not identified a housing option that they can afford to move into. A lot of our funding only helps people very short term. So we help with deposits, we might help with first and last month's rent, maybe a month or two of rent to get them stable. But in most cases, they have to have some plan that's going to work out in the short term. Like a job or maybe a, a new job or, or some kind of increase in their income. So that we can see that once we get them into a unit, they'll be sustainable in that short term. So first issue is it's hard for people to even find rentals. It was interesting to hear that Lebanon has a 2.5% vacancy rate. Corvallis has at times, right now there's, there is it 5%. But that's because a lot of the students have not come back because of the pandemic. But normally before COVID, they were at like 1% or less. So the whole region is really, has the same issue with availability. But the other common thing is. We get a lot of calls from people who are just, they're chronically behind in their rent. Because they really can't afford the rent they're at. We have a program that when I first started with CSC like 20 years ago. One of the qualifications to get this program was you were considered at risk of being homeless if you were severely rent burdened. Meaning if you were paying 50% or more of your gross monthly income towards your rent. We could put you on a homeless prevention program that helped you for six to 12 months. Well, now that's so common. And our funding has increased, but not enough to keep up with that. Pretty much now you have to be homeless before we can help you on a program like that. So we don't have ongoing programs that can help people who are just chronically unable to afford their rent. We can help people who've had an emergency, need to catch back up to avoid an eviction. We do that a lot, but the second most common reason we're unable to help people. Is because they're, they're just not sustainable in the unit that they are in. So we do help people move to cheaper places, assuming they can find them. So you know, just in general, I'm sure the point about. People having to have issues with transportation and things like that. It forces people, well, for one thing, when you're paying that much towards just existing. Then you have a lot less disposable income. So that means you're not able to buy anything but necessities. So that can impact the economic development of a town. You know, that's a lot less people eating out, lot less people buying clothes or furniture. Or taking advantage of recreational experiences. So it kind of limits how much small business that your town can gain. And then the other issue is. Any kind of small emergency that to you and I would just be an inconvenience and, and maybe a little bit of pain for a short term. Can be really devastating to somebody who's already severely rent burdened. For example, you blow a tire and you need a new tire. If you're trying to live outside of Lebanon. Because you can't afford to live in Lebanon anymore, but you work in Lebanon and you depend on that car to get to work. Well, if you have something go wrong with that car and now you can't afford to fix it. There's no real good public transportation. So chances are you're not going to make it to work. So that has an impact on employers. They have unsteady and unstable workforce because of employees having to constantly move, constantly miss work. And it's just a cascading effect. So. We have programs that help and we do what we can, but you know, the bottom line is everybody needs more. Housing in our area, especially workforce housing for people, you know, who are living in. You know, working for a living at maybe minimum wage or just above. That seems to be the biggest gap. So. That's what I had to add. I will turn it over to anybody who has questions or Brigetta.
Hi there, I'm Brigetta Olson with Dev Northwest and the chief operating officer for about 10 more hours. I've been with the organization for 17 years. And I'm transitioning to a position at the city of Corvallis next month. So we are a community development corporation. We own and develop affordable housing in this region. I have a very noisy cat, it's dinner time and my kids are downstairs, so I apologize. So we own and develop affordable housing in this region. We own 26 units of rental affordable housing in Lebanon and in this region. And our neighbors are suffering more than really hard choices between having food on the table. Pandemic. And a crisis for the pandemic. Our organization works not only on the development of affordable units for rentals, but also homeownership opportunities. We have financial wellbeing programming that helps folks learn how to budget and save and plan for their future. We have financial resources. We have a financial, community development financial institution, CDFI, that has lending arm. So we're able to help during the pandemic for small business lending. We also have down payment assistance. We've been able to secure additional grants to help stabilize our, our renters this during the pandemic. By helping with some rental assistance and some gift certificates for food, et cetera. I think one, I'd like just to thank you for your service on the planning commission. It's super wonderful to have engaged citizens who are giving back to community. And it's exciting to see that there's going to be 70, 72 new units of affordable housing online in Lebanon. And as a developer of affordable housing, I know that takes time. And I know it takes a lot of effort and partnerships with the city and that's fantastic. But as I would just ask for you to just think about. What you can continue to do to help support hardworking people who are trying to make ends meet. And particularly now in the pandemic. And that Rebecca Weinsager, my colleague is also here, but she can pipe in if she so desires and.
I think, I think you did a great job. Keep going.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for our incredible service providers?
No, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank them both for being here tonight and also want to thank them for what they do and. What they do for the communities.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us.
So thank you guys. So we'll continue the, the conversation. So far we've had a little bit of the doom and gloom. We've had the incredible information from the service providers and the, the incredible work that they're doing. And so the, the next phase of the conversation is going to continue on. To some possible solutions and how we're going to try to continue moving forward. So first and foremost, I, I think the fact that the, the city of Lebanon has made the permitting process easy. It's incredibly fast. Somebody can submit a development application for a 48-unit apartment complex in one month. Have it go all the way through to the planning commission for consideration. And that's pretty incredible if they get their, their paperwork in and, and done correctly. And, and so just the, the cutting of the red tape that the city has already done is a great incentive. To, to, and solution to. To, to, and solution to, to get more housing and more production. Um, there are some incentives that can be considered. Um, for affordable housing. Some of these conversations have previously come up when we were looking at those affordable housing developments. Um, so there are some land use tools. One would be reducing the parking requirements. Um, part of the conversations previously have been, there's a correlation between. Um, affordability and, and if you are unable to afford. Uh, a residential unit without the assistance, then there's a likelihood you, you don't own your own vehicle and you're likely to, to carpool or, or use transit in other manners. Um, and so there's less of a demand and need for parking overall associated with an affordable project. So there could be consideration of creating uh an affordable housing parking requirement separate from. Uh, a regular apartment complex that's market rate. Um, you can also consider inclusion uh incentivizing inclusionary zoning, which is basically for every single. Housing development, a portion of it would be uh set aside for uh income restricted units. Um, to, to ensure that there's in every single aspect, we're, we're providing. Two, three, four additional units to, to the mix for affordable affordability. Um, we can defer SDC charges, which is a large lump sum that they need to pay for uh the, the city's facilities. Um, or we can waive them if they're provided from a different source. Um, there's tax abatement laws that, that can be uh considered, which the state would. Uh, reduce your property tax requirement for your uh in exchange for the affordability of the units. Um, there's property donations or land banking, which are options, but they're not. Great and many within our city. We don't have a lot of land that's available. Um, or that's in the city's uh possession to be able to, to donate as part of this process. Um, but we also do have uh grants and loans available. Um, working with Dev Northwest, we've applied for a CDBG grant to uh help for affordable homes within the, the community to weatherize and to make improvements as necessary. Um, so there's the, it's assistance by a thousand different cuts, basically. You're, you're not going to have one uh silver bullet that's going to solve the whole thing. And so you need to start thinking about alternatives as a whole. Um, there is also, if we wanted to look at housing production, which in the city would include a lot of different steps for us to get to that point. Um, but different ways to propose or to uh to think about housing production would be to add a construction excise tax. So for every site, every type of development, anytime a building permit would be issued. They would have to pay, pay a tax on top of that building permit, which would then go into a fund for the city to then be a. A builder with a partner of creating affordable housing units. Um, we could apply for state tax credits or federal tax credits. Um, other private entities have done that, such as the entities that obtained the funding for the seventy-two units of affordable housing. Um, and then the CDD program like we talked about. Um, urban renewal is an option, but not a, a great option within our community. Uh, a large portion of our urban renewal areas are industrial based focus. Um, or park focus such as the Cheetah Lake one. Um, but there might be small inroads which we can use the urban renewal areas to, to provide that incentive as well. Um, so like I said, thousand different options to try to help the solution as a whole.
And just as a um affordable housing developer, it's great to have additional resources and tools. Um, and because of the crisis, having more tools in our toolbox is fabulous. Having a construction access tax where we can leverage both then state and federal dollars. Um, shows a local commitment and it can help a developer be able to get the, the money that's needed to finish the deal. And other tools. Yeah.
Um, some other solutions, uh like I said, process efficiency. We have online permitting, permitting done. We have expedited land uses done. Um, I, I put a, a large number of question marks under our code audit for clear and objective standards and affordable housing density bonus. Uh, we do have the affordable housing density bonus done. We did a code audit um back associated with. Uh, the latest, uh, I think HB uh four thousand and six, but we did a code audit a few years before I got here. Um, and we were in compliance with the, the code, but as we experienced in some of the last housing projects that we've had. Um, the clear and objective standards uh was contested. And so. As we go through in the next phase, we're going to be looking at that again. Um, again, evaluate the parking standards. Do we want to consider doing a lesser parking requirement for an affordable housing project? Um, some other considerations which are available, um, but we also already provide such great flexibility. Uh, in the city, which it may not be necessary. Um, is I identifying minimum densities. Uh, so you no longer would have large subdivisions on acre lots. You would have a minimum requirement of those lots being, say, ten thousand square feet or, or less or something like that. Um, we already have in our code a requirement that if you do a subdivision with those larger type lots. Then you have to provide a plan that demonstrates how those larger lots could in the future be subdivided into smaller lots. So. We require people to plan ahead of time to create those greater densities over time. Um, so we do have those as well. Um, and then other types of housing opportunities to, to build into, we do allow for affordable, uh sorry, accessory dwelling units. Um, we are also updating our code to make sure that it's compliant with the latest round of state's uh requirements. Uh, per House Bill two thousand and one and two thousand and three. Um, and then for a future look into what the planning commission's going to be experiencing over the next six months. Um, House Bill two thousand and one is effective. Uh, now uh DLCD has drafted a um model ordinance for cities. To implement the requirements of House Bill two thousand and one, which states that anywhere where a single family home is permitted. That now requires you to also permit by rights. If the single family home is permitted by right, you must also permit by right duplexes. And utilize the same exact standards. Uh, that you would for a single family home for the duplex as a whole. So I'll use the example of parking. Right now, a single family home requires two parking spaces per unit on a single property. Um, and you only have a single unit on that single property. For a duplex, you must apply the same standard. So the duplex as a whole, both units combined would only require two parking spaces. Rather than the four, which we currently require. Um, and so there's going to be changes that we're going to have to update the code associated with that. When we do that, we'll be updating the code to make sure our accessory dwelling unit is in compliance. And then we'll be going through the code audit again to ensure that we do have, in fact, the clear and objective standards. Um, so we'll be taking actions to provide opportunities for additional housing. Uh, and making sure that we're compliant with the state requirements. Um, we do have a lot of support, like we talked about with CDBG opportunities. We have a lot of support with CSC within our community. Um, and we have a lot of support with just the development community as a whole. Um, it's astronomical, but within just two thousand and twenty, we've approved two hundred and eighty-three housing units. Um, that's a hundred and fifty-four of them have been multifamily. And seventy-four of those have been affordable housing units. Uh, and then the rest of it has been. Or manufactured homes. Um, that is a lot of growth. And so I think as you continue to have that growth, as you continue to build those housing options. You're going to have the impact to reduce that rent severity as you build in the opportunity to have those. Different housing choices to provide that moveability. Um, and the city uh did a housing needs analysis and a building land, a buildable land inventory. Um, in two thousand and nineteen. That document demonstrated that because of the city's zoning flexibility that we already have. We already are uh able to accommodate what we need to accommodate for the future growth as well. Um, so the, the city is doing what it needs to do. We can always do a little bit more. We can always partner a little bit more. We can always try to find additional funding so, uh sources to encourage affordable housing. Um, but we're making inroads. It's just going to take time and a, a number of different. Uh, partners to help us continue to decrease that, that rent severity within the community. Uh, so as I talked about, this is our plan for the next couple of months. Um, and uh that kind of finishes off what I have. And so I welcome any further comments, questions, suggestions of how to solve it with that lovely silver bullet. Anything you guys got?
Real, real quick, I don't want to make the meeting longer than it has to, but I think it's great that we're giving, you know, we're doing what the state requests. And how, you know, we're looking to, to make it easy to build affordable housing. But the developers get a lot to do it. I mean, they have a lot of resources already. You've got four percent tax credits. They actually get developer fees from the state. They have Oregon Affordable Housing Tax Credits, CBDG Funds. I mean, they already have a lot that they can do and that they get as well from the state. So I think it's great that we're looking into this. I'd. I would just, and to, to meet the demand, I would just wonder. Um, overall, as a planning commission, we look at the urban growth boundary and say, hey, we're going to go from low density to mixed density. I think this is great and fantastic overall. But um, you know, and there is a rent burden, not only in Lebanon, but there's a rent burden across all of Oregon, right? Um, but at, at, at one point, I think we should look at what citizens of Lebanon already want. Um, versus, you know, hey, we're, we're accommodating low income folks, which is great. We, we need to do that. Um, uh, and I also think it's great that the city is doing what we can to, to invite maybe more developers, but. If we do our research, reach, community development partners, Dev Northwest, these guys have years of. Uh, already building and taking advantage of four percent tax credits and. Um, for us to make it even easier for them to come and build, I think is great. Um, but I, I also think that we should also look at what our citizens that are already here want as well. Um, I'm not saying stop affordable housing. What I'm saying is, is. Um, you know, we should all take a really big look at this and also make sure that we're. Abiding by what the state's asking and, and create more affordable housing, but there's a lot bigger picture to what goes on with it. Again. Dev Northwest, Reeds Community Development Partners, they, they get a lot of money in developer fees from the state already to, to do what they do. Um, all they have to do is just come by the land, go to planning commission and build. It's pretty easy. Um, but uh, again, I, I'm glad we're doing what we're doing and I hope to. To do what we can to help out, but I'd hope the other planning commissioners really look into what these developers get to, to build. Um, it's not just, you know, some guy changing annexing to get um something in, you know, to, to get into the city so we can connect water. When these developers come in and they build these apartment complexes, they, they get money to do so. And I think it's great that Lebanon is making it easier for them, like Kelly said, but I recommend that all of the developers do the research and see. What, what they're getting um to develop these properties. It's not just. You know, hey, we're doing this for the people, but really look into what the developers get to build these properties. And to make sure that it's for the, for the citizens. And I just recommend everyone do that. But thank you, Dev Northwest and everybody coming in on this. Thank you.
Just with all, all due respect, you know, the, the work that affordable housing development is super complex and to put in a tax credit application. We're competing against our peers across the state of Oregon and generally only a third of the applicants get funded. So we're talking about years of trying to apply and apply and, and wetland mitigation sometimes, et cetera. So. We can get into the weeds of all the affordable housing development. Um, we do have some tools, but additional tools are always helpful, particularly as we're in a housing crisis and, and folks are really having to make hard choices.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Brigida. Um, all right, when you guys do apply for the next one, are you guys applying for four percent non-competitive tax credits or nine percent competitive tax credits?
We don't have a, a LHTC application in the queue right now for um Lynn County at all. Um, and so, and we haven't in the past utilized four percents. Um. But we have tried. Um, we haven't applied, but we've tried to run the performer, et cetera. You have a lot of background. I'd love to talk to you out offline at some time, at some point, Samuel. I don't know what you do, but.
Appreciate it.
That would be great. Thank you.
Well, I know uh this keeps coming back around, but on one of the Kelly's slides, it showed why housing was so expensive in Lebanon. And I think you could see in Oregon all around. And it was land availability and it was the, the cost to purchase that land. And I find it ironic that the state of Oregon wants the cities to come up with uh all these different solutions when. Um, it's the state of Oregon that has some of the most restrictive land use laws in the United States of America. And uh a lot, that along with the wetlands that we have to mitigate and the severe cost that comes with that. Yeah, it's, it shouldn't take a rocket scientist to figure out why land in Oregon is so expensive to develop when you have a limited supply. And to develop the stuff that's available, especially here in Lebanon and in the mid-valley, it's astronomical to mitigate the wet, wetlands. So I think um this is a good discussion and I, I know for the past few years, I've seen Lebanon doing its part to make it easy. And uh the planning commission, you know, we've approved a lot of multifamily housing the last few years. Um, but it just, it always strikes me as ironic that the, the state puts these mandates on us and they really. They don't, they have the silver bullet really that they would be able to fix it. Um, a lot easier than all these little, little bits of ideas that we're coming up with. But that's all I want to say on that. I don't want to stretch it out too long.
Just a couple of comments. Uh, Kelly, some of your um statistics that you talked about earlier about. Lebanon and the rent burden um two thousand and nineteen, I think you said it was a little better than two thousand and eighteen. It'll be interesting to see what happens in twenty because of the pandemic. Um, because of the um uh, the unemployment, of course. Uh, but I guess more on the positive side as far as runaway rents. Um, Senate Bill six oh eight that established the rent control. Uh, doesn't allow the runaway rents anymore. Uh, the most you can do is seven percent plus cost of living. So that should help that a little bit. Um, but I mean, as far as I, I absolutely agree with what Jeremy said. That's the runaway cost of housing is, I, I don't see an end to that. Uh, that's, you know, that's what I do for a living. And uh it's, it's scary, honestly scary. In the thirty years I've done this. What's happened with the, the cost of housing? It's, it's out of control. The right across the mid-valley, Corvallis Albany Lebanon Sweet Home. Um, there's been a bit of a migration. Uh, the more. Expensive the land gets, Corvallis and Albany, the more they tend to go toward Lebanon, then they tend to go toward Sweet Home. Uh, and that's had a, a huge impact on prices of both. Uh, affordable housing, uh homeownership and rentals. Uh, it's, it's, um, I don't know when it's going to stop.
When you close the border.
It may take more than that.
Maybe Oregon should. Tax when California is buying a house in Oregon, it's a forty percent higher price because, since they're all paying in cash anyway.
I'm okay with that now that I've already bought my home. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, you're an Oregonian now.
Yeah.
You're one of the um. Uh, I don't know, one element of it. The first time buyers is for the most part not in the market anymore. They just flat can't afford it. Uh, and that's sad because we used to be able to accommodate first time home buyers, no questions asked. But it's really, really difficult anymore.
And that's one of the greatest ways for low income people to build wealth over time too. And so to take that away, um, you're taking away potential generations to pass down wealth.
That's right.
Right. And if people aren't graduating from rentals to their own homes, then that's going to leave the rental. Vacancy rate really low because people who normally would graduate to buying a home are just continuing to rent. And especially younger people who've lived through uh the housing crisis, you know. And watched maybe their parents lose their homes to foreclosure. And now they have a lot of student loan debt and that kind of thing. They're. They're leery of getting into home buying because they've seen what can happen. They're leery of getting into home buying because they've seen what can happen. So hopefully, they can, we can find ways to build housing all along the spectrum so that everybody finds a place.
I'd also like to mention, as a landlord, I think people, it gets lost to what effects taxes have on rent prices. And taxes, without question, they go up every year, but when you're hit with bond measures and levies and those increases, they're going to be passed on to the renters. And I don't know if the average renter understands that when they vote yes or no on an issue that's going to raise taxes. But it's just something that should be mentioned when we're talking about the price of rent going up continually. That the landowners paying those property taxes and they don't go down. Any other comments amongst the commissioners or anybody? All right. Until we talk about this next year. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, everyone else for participating. Commission business comments.
So, yeah, I've got a question for Ron. A lot of the units that we've approved in the last year is on the east side of town. I don't know that we've ever talked about capacity on that side of town. Are we good for who knows how long or where are we at with that?
Sure. I don't know. So the units that you have, that the planning commission and the city council has approved, actually all tied to the West Side Interceptor, believe it or not. The Albany Canal is the separation on that. So if you think about that and the units that you have, all those units that are on the, I'll call it the west side of the canal, all drain to the West Side Interceptor. So we're building capacity into that. And it's a good question. It's one that we're looking into. We've actually got a consulting firm who did our West Side Interceptor modeling is doing our east side interceptor modeling just for the old warehouse or site, looking at our system as a whole. And we should know the answer to that here soon. I can tell you that we've never seen issues with the east side and the central interceptors. I mean, in terms of overtopping or anything like that. I believe there's capacity into it. To what extent, I don't know. But we're actually looking into that right now. And hopefully by, I think probably by June, we should know. It's been an extensive update to the models, so.
From my end, we will be having a meeting in January. It's likely going to have one subdivision on it, but maybe two. Both are related to townhomes or single-family homes to continue making that mix of housing in the city. And then in reference to Samuel's comments about taking a look at things as a whole of the city and making sure that we're accommodating the will of the people while also meeting the requirements. We will be slowly initiating the process of having to update our comprehensive plan again. So anticipates a budget item likely in the next year's budget to start the process. And it'll be about a two and a half year process for us to complete. And during that time, we will continue to have public input and we'll need to have your guys' input as a planning commission. And so that will be a discussion that we'll have yet again and make sure we hone in the balance between requirements and will of the people and all of the good stuff in between. So be prepared for that and have happy holiday.
Yes, you too. You all have a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everybody.